All set? Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is January 5th, Tuesday, our briefing session. And typically at this time, we go over informal matters, upcoming meetings and such. And we just usually just go around the room and update each other and things. So like I said, it's informal. We start off with the city manager, so I'm going to hand it off to Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. And so, just a few things to cover this evening. One is that on the agenda tonight, we have the engineer on call services. And we need a commissioner or commissioner. That selection committee, recall, there's four categories of work in water, wastewater, stormwater, and transportation. So there's quite a few to review. But assuming you approve that item this evening, then we'll need a commissioner or commissioners to serve on that, so.
Sure. I think, is there, are any of the commissioners interested in serving on that on-call services selection committee?
I'd like to do it again. I was on it last time, so I'm familiar with it and the process. So I just assume continuing.
Okay. And I think Commissioner Morris had indicated she was interested as well.
I would like to serve on, I served, Lynn and I both served on it three years ago. And so, I'd like to do it again. Three years ago was our first time. So this is the first time where we need to consider it again and giving other firms the opportunity to apply.
Sounds good. Can we have two again, then?
Yes.
Okay. So let's put Commissioner Butler, as well as Commissioner Morris, on that selection committee.
All right. Thank you. Then late this afternoon, we also updated and added another task force member to the, the. Task force. And so if you didn't get that, you should have a copy of that added to the PowerPoint. Then also, we had sent out kind of a hold the date for you for the commission retreat together, as well as the strategic kickoff, strategic plan kickoff. And we're looking at Friday, January 22nd in the afternoon, as well as Friday, January 29th in the afternoon. And if you wanted to do a box lunch and start early, we can do that, too. We just need to preorder that. We believe it would be best to do it from here, because we'll still be likely in hybrid mode, so that we can broadcast from this location.
Do you want us to tell you that date now?
I just would like to know if that's not going to work, so we can plan accordingly.
It works for me, either one of those dates.
Okay. We'll be, we'll be doing both, so.
Both, both work for me.
Gotcha, okay.
Linda Morris here. Both dates work for me also.
And then if you want to give us.
Jared Wassinger sent us all something a while back, asking us to hold those two dates. So that helps.
If you want to, we're happy to throw in that box lunch and start a little earlier, if you want to. So otherwise, we won't.
I think it would be fine. Are we talking one to five?
One to five, unless we do a lunch, box lunch, we'd start sooner.
Yeah, that's what I, okay, good. That makes sense.
All right. And then it's our turn to host the initial city-county county meeting for January. And maybe talk about some joint legislative issues that we might want to talk about. Obviously, the dark stores has been, hypothetical lease fee has been one of the issues that we've talked about before, and there may be others. Specific with Riley County, we'd like to visit, you know, I know that you're familiar with the work and the presentation that was done to extend sewer services to Keats. One of the things we'd like to talk about is the rate structure for that. And so, the county has written a letter asking for some considerations on that rate structure. So I think we should talk about that a little bit. Obviously, you've got a couple of new county commissioners that probably aren't aware of the, of the proposal as well. So that's a possibility. I know the staffs are meeting later this week. And so it will kind of be dependent on how that, that meeting goes, whether that would stay on there at this time. But look for that to come forward in the near future. Yes, the January 21st at four. And then there, assume there'd be an intergovernmental luncheon. It's the county's turn to host those. Riley County's turn, so we'll see, see where that goes.
Yeah, I wanted to ask one question on that city-county meeting. I don't know if that'd be, probably be appropriate, two new commissioners there is bring back up this issue of RCPD in the parking garage? Because we were going to have a staff meeting to sort of work that out. And, you know, the last group just sort of threw it under the bus without even consideration. And like to ask them if they'd like to, you know, relook that, because, because I still think the idea of having RCPD in that parking garage is a big benefit to the city. And so we can, you know, you got a new crew there, it's worth raising that question again.
It's probably good to have maybe two items on there. So instead of having three, because we never have a good discussion when we have three items, so we can just pick either the legislative issues, combined legislative issues between the county and the city. You said you want. And the substation.
And typically, we, we ask, we, if there are items for discussion, we run those by the folks, the other folks that are attending to make sure that they're ready to have that discussion as well, or want some more background information. So we can certainly add that. Future meeting would be appropriate. Jason, did you have a, were you able to meet with, with staff at any time?
Yeah, I was just going to comment. My only caution would be to circle back with Director Butler and make sure he's ready for that conversation. I don't know if the RCPD director and staff, they've had some changeover. Greg Steer, who was down in the substation in Riley County Police Department, has now been elevated to take, I believe, Captain Fink's position. So I asked Greg, last time he was in the building, RCPD's law board meeting, and he said the director really hadn't made his, his strategy finalized. So it might be worth talking with Director Butler to see if they're ready, when. I don't, I mean, I don't think it hurts anything to talk about it, but I don't know what his strategy was to approach the county.
Yeah, well, he was, you know, as far as the idea of that training site, I think that's out the window. I think everybody agreed on that, so it's just a matter of, you know, the, the county guys were concerned about the cost, you know, because they claim the county pays for that. But of course, I've, that doesn't really fly with me, because 75% of the population's in the city, and so the city's paying that, too. So I, I think it's just time to bring that back up. We've been fooling around with it too long, and we're going to get moving on this garage. And if we're going to dedicate that space, we need to do it. And I also think that the city should make as many accommodations as we can. You and I discussed that, you know, one afternoon. Because the, the benefit is primarily to us and to Aggieville and security for that garage. So we should do what we can for that.
Is that something why I talked to Dennis Butler first, or? I don't, I feel like that's what I got, the communication is to talk to Director Butler first, before we.
Yeah, I just didn't want to overstep their request to be in there of the county. It, it's clearly a relationship with RCPD and the county, given the statutes and who funds what. But, you know, Lynn, you're right. You and I have talked about different strategies to get there financially. There are a lot of ways to get them in this facility. And we've structured a couple of different proposals to the county. There's room for negotiation, and it's really getting to the table and talking about it. But my only reservation was just making sure PD's ready to have that conversation.
Yeah, and my concern is not, not so much us solving anything at the meeting, but just agreeing to let the staffs hash out the details, because we, we don't need to be trying to skin that cat in that meeting. But if the two staffs can sit down and RCPD with you and come up with a strategy, that's what I'm interested in. Instead of what happened was, we just sort of got shut down entirely. It was like, this isn't going to happen. And then that's, that's not what I wanted to see. A little bit more cooperation. So that, that's all I really want to hit at that meeting, is just can we agree to actually allow the staffs to hash out the, the details of this little project?
Yeah, that, my only additional comment would be, we, Rich Fargo did reach out. We have shared some documents back and forth. So getting that concurrence to continue that discussion would be helpful.
Yeah, I don't, I think, well, one thing I just want to step back a little bit. When we speak, let's speak into the mic and also say our name. I got some feedback that, because some of us could, they couldn't hear some of us. But I don't have a problem bringing it back up. I, we've been following this for a long time. I was kind of surprised the way it went down with the Riley County Commissioners at one of their meetings. I thought we were moving, and I thought we had consensus and had some momentum, at least for the substation, not so much for the training center. And that seems to have not been the case. And I was surprised by that decision. But I think that's something the new commissioners should probably be a part of as well. So if we want to put that on the city-county-county agenda for, just to have them take a relook at it, that would be fine. And also have, make sure that Director Butler is aware of the discussion also.
Yeah, we can cover those bases and, and give, provide some background and, and some, some options versus some of the specifics that were discussed previously. So I think that would be good, just to talk about starting the dialogue again. The only other thing I had is we are, we had thought we would be ready to have some discussion on Aggieville and some other issues next week at the, your work session, but it doesn't look like those are going to come together timely enough. So as of right now, we are not planning to have a work session next week.
There's nothing to talk about for a work session?
Not that we have.
In such a short run, okay.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Okay, thank you, Ron. Unfortunately, we haven't had any military ceremonies or discussions, but I think there was one that was sent out. And I hope all the commissioners are getting some kind of a e-vite to some of those online invitations as well. Typically, you usually bring up something going on about the military on a monthly basis, but we haven't had that. And I don't think this month we have a luncheon either.
Right.
Jared, any updates? Nothing from you, okay. Jason? From Jason. Dennis?
Just one for you, Mayor and Commissioners. The Recovery Task Force will be meeting monthly now in the new year of '21. And so the next meeting of the Recovery Task Force will be January 14th. And we will have Julie Gibbs, who's one of the presenters, at that meeting, talking about vaccinations and some other things for work in the community.
Thank you. Katie? Brenda? All right. Commissioner Butler?
Turn on the microphone. I hope it's working better now. It has to be straight.
You just have to lean in a little, I think.
Yeah, be sure we can talk into it, so it, not too much. I'm interested in, you know, if you remember last year, Thomas Signs gave us a folder, and they were interested in bringing up this digital sign thing, and it sort of fell off the radar. And he's still interested in that, and I like to support our local business. And he had a pretty good program where he was going to eliminate a bunch of large billboards and, and replace, I think, a three. And I'd really like to see us, you know, put that to rest here in the next couple of months.
Commissioner Haddasol, nothing? Okay. Commissioner Esther Brooke?
Commissioner Esther Brooke, I, the only, Commissioner Butler stole what I was going to say. And I, I second, I think, looking at that Thomas Sign, I've kind of gone back and looked at some of the stuff that. So whatever updated information, I haven't seen, but interested. We did talk about that, I think, in January or February, when it first got on, so continuing. Happy to see that in the future.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes, thank you. Linda Morris here. I just wanted to say I appreciate the opportunity to join. By Zoom or Face, what is the other one? YouTube, I think's the other one. And because I, I don't, right now, I don't have, shouldn't be out in public a lot. So this is a perfect opportunity, a perfect technology that allows all of us to join together. I, I would announce two and others, I think you already know, but the public may not, is that the law board appointments have now been made. And Mayor Ready has appointed Pat Hudgens and Lee Stony and myself to the law board. And those are effective January 1st. And the county commissioners, just this last Monday, appointed John Ford, Commissioner, Catherine Fokie, a new Commissioner, and Bob Ward, who is a civilian and will be continuing on the law board. So the statute says that the number of commissioners flips back and forth every two years. So for the last two years, we've had two city commissioners on the law board. And beginning this in, for '21 and '22, there will be two county commissioners. So it kind of divides the influence there and balances it out. It's a good thing. Last week, I think it was Friday, we, the city commission and administration met with our local legislators. And they were Tom Hawke, State Senator Tom Hawke, State Representative Sidney Carlin, State Representative Suzie Carlson from Clay Center, and State Representative Ron Highland from east of here. He represents like five different counties, but he lives near Wamago. And so we talked about our cities, and I believe these legislators are going around to all the different units of government in the region to learn what the priorities are. And so Manhattan's top couple of priorities was the pandemic and get, and, and state and federal aid to local governments to help reimburse for those expenses. An alternate property valuation system, which we kind of call, for short, the dark store theory. State shared revenue, which is that LVTR, LAVTR, that Ron Wells has championed. And, oh, the property tax lid, of course. The cities and counties are, the legislature has put a lid on the property taxes. And that has, I don't know, been there about, what, five years now? And it's kind of stifling thing. So the city has asked, and I think the League of Kansas Municipalities is asking for a, the ability to exempt employee benefits, because we don't have control over health insurance rates for our employees. And you know, anyone knows that they go up every year. And it's really hard for us to have to reduce other cities' programs for that. So it would be, that's one of the things we were asking. I'm pleased that we have new technology in the city commission room that will aid in better, better, well, I don't know the right word, anyway. It's, right now, it's not exactly working well. But it will be. And we're working on making the sound louder. I, for anyone who's listening at home, they've been tinkering with it while we've been talking and improving it somewhat. It is still too, it's not going to work for the future, but it will help us get through this meeting. But it should improve the visual quality as well and, and have us be able to better accommodate public comments and outside, you know, like the consultants or something. So the room is being upgraded, and we have good expectations that it will, one day, be finished. I think, I don't know anything else, other than your comments earlier about the Riley County Law Board. I think it's important to stress that anytime the commissioners can get together and develop a better, a better relationship. The relationship the last couple of years has, has been rather difficult. And so I'm looking forward to a new, the county has new, two new commissioners. And just, it's a new day, is all. And hey, aren't we, we're here in 2021. 2020 is gone now. So let's put it behind us, and we'll be able to, to, to benefit from and, and work on the future. I, I think, from what I read in the area newspapers, COVID is still very present here. It is not gone. We can't act like it's over with, because it isn't. And even once, once we start being vaccinated, it's, the projections are, and I think you saw Ned Seaton's editorial the other day, that it looks like it will be summer before the majority of people. Now that's the immunity level we're looking for. And so we have to be vigilant, we have to continue precautions. And if you notice the obituaries, there are more than there have ever been. And, but if you notice, they're almost all over 70. So largely senior citizens who are dying. And we need to, it's not just one age group. It's, you know, the 1918 pandemic, young people, 18 to 22, were, were the ones that were dying then. And the citizenry did not say, oh, well, that's okay. We can't say that because of old people are dying either. We have to look after our whole population and do what's in their best interest. So I would just admoni, just, just be cautious, continue to be cautious. And so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. So Ron, I just wanted to ask you, typically, maybe it's after Lynn becomes mayor, we start doing new board assignments for commissioners. And usually, the mayor is part of the NBAF Liaison Committee. And I wanted to make sure that he gets that information. And when do we start doing those appointments?
So usually after this meeting, and usually, and I apologize, I meant to bring that up, because that change in the mayorship, obviously, the mayor's assigned to do several different tasks. Official on the chamber board, the library board, the NBAF liaison group, community liaison group is one. So I did forward that to Commissioner, or Mayor Pro Tem Butler. So he has that one. But as a, as a result of that, then with Linda stepping into the Mayor Pro Tem position, I think that position has typically been on the Convention and Visitors Bureau board. So that adds additional responsibilities for some of those individuals. And so usually, you all talk about, do you want to switch some things up from your representation to share the load? So don't know that we need to decide, obviously, tonight, but those are some things to be thinking about if somebody wants to step away from some things because they've got a bigger load, or just have some interest in serving in another area. At the same time, there's always goodness in representation and knowing the group that you've been serving with and, and some of the history there. So it's not like it's a new learning curve for somebody else when you've established some of those relationships.
It'd be great, I know you, you'll probably do this, but just send out that sheet that who's already serving or how long they've served.
Sure.
So that anybody else wants to serve on it. And I think the MPO, we've had alternates, and Commissioner Morris has been on the Flint Hills Regional Council. Commissioner Haddasol's been on the Senior Center Advisory Board. So all of those, just in case we want to switch it up or stick with what we have. And of course, at, at that point, Commissioner Butler, Mayor Butler will have different responsibilities as well. So I just wanted to put that on our radar for.
We'll send that out in Thursday's mailfold.
Okay. Great. We usually have a community meeting with the K-State leadership every Monday at 1:30 to talk about COVID and how it relates to Kansas State University and within the community. This time with the students gone, there was just a little bit of discussion more about vaccines. So this, the vaccine rollout is, of course, out and up and going. We had maybe between everybody in Manhattan, probably about a little over a thousand people that have gotten vaccinated, whether it's via Christie, Stone Creek, Senior Center, Metallar, RCHD, and some other facilities. There are different avenues on how they're getting that vaccine. Some are from the state, some are from the federal departments. The biggest challenge seems to be uploading it into the KDHG systems about who's been vaccinated. And, and they're not sure when they're getting it to those shipments, and that's been a challenge for them to keep track of. There was talk about the immunity. So if somebody has tested positive in the past, and then you're over it, they said you probably have immunity about six to nine months after that. So that's still being researched on, but used to be, they thought it was about 90 days. So they've upped it to six to nine months in most cases. So that's not like 100% for everybody. But in most cases, it seems you can have six to nine months of immunity if you had already tested positive. But still to be cautious as you go out, because people don't know that you've already had it. And there could be different perceptions with that alone. Still, the cases are rising in the city of Manhattan. There was talk about the new strain, but it's still, the vaccine will still work against even the new strain, but it is much stronger in the sense that it's more contagious. Let me see. The second phase of the rollout for the vaccines will probably be the February, which means the second priority folks are your essential workers, which includes teachers, paraprofessionals, educators, and other essential workers. So those were some of the things that were discussed at the community meeting. Commissioner Morris mentioned the state legislators. Well Health is still doing spit-based saliva testing for COVID, nine o'clock to 5:30 at Seaco Park, by Candlewood entrance into the Seaco Park area. They're doing pretty well as far as collecting samples and getting information out to anybody who's had it, whether it's positive or negative, as soon as possible. RCHD has a website with questions and answers about the vaccine, because there's been so many questions about it. And they're trying to update it as fast as possible, but they don't have all the information that everybody's seeking at the same time. I was on a different call today for justice involved in youth and adolescents, mostly about mental health. One thing that they kept talking about was these community-based crisis centers, such as the stabilization center, and how effective that's been and to continue funding it. One of the primary reasons we have the stabilization center was to keep people out of Osawatomie or getting hospitalized, or keep them out of Via Christie. So that's been working really well here, and I want to continue that in other communities. So there was talk about funding sources and other areas to work with police officers and training, more training for everybody else. So good discussions happening, a lot of good people working on a lot of mental health needs in our community as well. I had talked to Ron. One of the things we wanted to talk about was that some, sometime in the near future, I don't know when, it has to be pretty quick, commerce, the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce has this group called METAL from Manhattan and Poria, Topeka, and Lawrence. Once they have their legislative priorities set, they usually approach the legislators. And it would be good if we also were on the same page, so we're not all inundating them with different needs. Oftentimes, what the chamber has, what we need and what Riley County needs are usually aligned. So it would be good to have those in front of us sometimes, so we are all speaking the same language. And if our asks are the same, in most cases, they're probably very similar. So I would like to work on that a little bit more, too. That's it as far as briefing sessions. I wish, I mean, for the briefing session, I wish we had more military things to discuss, but unfortunately, that's been the biggest gap, I think, I've missed. All of my mayor term is that going to Fort Riley and participating in all of their events. All of my mayor term is that going to Fort Riley and participating in all of their events. And that's been the, the biggest hole and haven't been able to build those relationships like we typically do. But other than that, nothing else here. Yes, Ron?
Um, I just wanted to mention that, uh, for the most part, we have Vivian Yuccello back as our Public Information Officer. Uh, the county did hire Hallie. And she's working in that position, uh, for the Health Department. Uh, however, uh, Vivian is still providing a little bit of support, uh, as needed. But, uh, for the most part, we have, it's good to have her back. And, uh, so you'll be, uh, seeing her name more associated with our typical city releases, so.
Very good. I think I saw her today.
I just appreciate the work that she did for them and.
Yeah.
She did a great job and put in a lot of hours. So we, we appreciate, uh, her, uh, professional ability to meet some of those needs. And we're pleased that the county, uh, saw fit to hire someone to, uh, step into that role for not only the Health Department, but for the county.
Yes, much needed. I was surprised they didn't have anybody. So if that, if that's it as far as updates, um, it's what, about 20 minutes till we start up again? Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Yusha Lindemore. Um, I was just thinking how we might, um, what, what if we were to invite the Garrison Commander to speak to us for maybe it need, or talk with us for about a half hour or an hour? If we give him information about what's going on in our city, uh, we could ask for him to update us periodically. And it's not just us, meaning the city. I would maintain that the city, the county, even the university, that, so it might be something we could consider, uh, emphasizing at an intergovernmental meeting somehow. I don't want it to take up the whole time at all, but. Power, I don't know, but there's gotta be a way. Otherwise, we're not going to connect with Fort Riley until summer. And so, uh, we need to be thinking of a way to do that.
I think that's a good idea.
Beneficial to all of us.
Yeah, maybe for intergovernmental. I don't know if they can present or not. I think it's worth a shot. Okay, anything else? All right, we can step aside for about 20 minutes then.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. Happy New Year. Our first City Commission meeting. Please stand up for Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, a nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We accepted public comments in writing prior to tonight's meeting, and any comments admitted were given to all members of the City Commission. We will announce each item, whether we received any public comment, and we are also allowing public comment from those attending the meeting in person tonight. Each public comment should comply with our public comment rules. Each speaker has five minutes. Please clearly state your name and address for the record, and for those listening or watching this evening. And if you are on a mic or on a Zoom call, please state your name when you're speaking as well. With that, we do have a proclamation this evening for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Celebration and Day of Service. We have Kevin Bryant, co-chair, I hope I say this right, Felicia Williams and Suzanne Glemore, committee members for the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Committee. Brenda, would you like to read, please read the proclamation?
Whereas January 18th, 2021 marks the observance of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Federal Holiday and Service Day established in 1983. This King Holiday and Service Acts highlight remembrance and celebration and encourages people everywhere to reflect on the principles of nonviolent social change, racial equality, community and humanitarian service, and interracial cooperation. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. Celebrating Dr. King's life and spirit through community-wide recognitions and service on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, bringing our citizens together and strengthening our communities and nation. It is appropriate for the city of Manhattan to support a community celebration in observance of the King Holiday and Day of Service honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Each of us can and must contribute to the betterment of our communities with increased opportunity for all our citizens. Now therefore, Usher Ray, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, does hereby proclaim January 16th through the 18th, 2021, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Celebration and Day of Service in Manhattan, Kansas, and urge all people to join and pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and apply his life principles and teachings of service to inspire others to serve and remember his spirit of community.
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you for being here this evening to receive the proclamation. Would you like to come up and make a few comments about the celebration or any comments related to Martin Luther King Jr. Day celebration? Just state your name and go ahead. Welcome, Kevin.
My name is Kevin Bryant. I live at 7850 Lookout Drive. I am the co-chair of the Manhattan Martin Luther King Memorial Committee. We know this has been a difficult year. We did this last year. Mayor Redding, we appreciate your speakings that you've had. 2020 was a very interesting adventure for us. We, not only did we redo a mural from Seventeenth Street from the celebration, it was taken to the State House in Topeka and celebrated also with the state, with the government and the governor. We've taken Manhattan to Topeka, which is an amazing accomplishment. We sit here to celebrate a virtual celebration that we're going to be utilizing. A lot of the local media, we're using a local media company. We have local talent and the talent is abundant here. Also like to talk about the art and writing contest. I'll let Susan Glemore, who is our chair, give a few words.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Glemore and I live at 1405 Nichols Street. And this year, our art and writing contest is also on virtual. And I pulled up, I want to make sure I get it right. Our theme for this year is, every year we have a quotation from Dr. King that we use as our theme. And this year, the quotation is this. Each of us is an architect faced with the task of drawing a blueprint for the building of our lives. What is in your life's blueprint? So we posed that question as the theme for everyone to participate, and we've had, I would say approximately, all told, maybe about 120, close to 130 art and writing submissions. So we're really excited about that, especially given that things are so weird this year. So we're looking forward to that, and we also, this year, because it's all virtual, want to do something a little different. Traditionally, in the celebrations, the students come up and they display, they show their artwork or they read a little bit from their, their writing submission. And this time, we want to put together a slideshow that really captures some key piece of every submission that we have gotten, so that everyone is honored for their participation.
Thank you, Susan.
And I want to say that Felicia Williams, sorry, is one of our local artists who's helping on this, and she's also helping to judge the art entries. And the other local artist is Felicia Lax Jefferson, who is also a local artist and a judge in our offices.
Excellent.
So just a reminder of events, on the 16th at four, we'll be having a live Facebook community celebration. We are featuring the Chrissy Barnes about the Docking Drug Store will be her theme. Of course, in MLK Week of Service by Hands-on K-State is a close partnership with us. Monday will be our virtual breakfast, which we usually hold out at the Sheridan. It will be Javel Rone, who will be speaking on that one. And of course, on Friday, February 5th, the Laying of the Reefs at K-State. Definitely like to thank the City of Manhattan for their support.
Thank you for all three of you for being here this evening. Is the breakfast also virtual or? Excellent, thank you. And 130 submissions, that's pretty cool. And it'll be good that, to have all of them displayed. I'm sure their families appreciate it, as does the community. Thanks for all the work you're doing on behalf of Martin Luther King Day, as well as the committee and our community. We appreciate it. Okay, it is the first meeting of the month, and typically, we have public comments at this time. The public was allowed to submit public comments not related to any agenda item through the City Commission, through the city's website, or email or call the City Commissioners directly until four o'clock today. There was one public comment regarding an item that was received. And in-person comments are also accepted at this time. So if there's any public comment, please come and state your name and address, and this is your chance to anything that's not on our agenda this evening. Seeing no public comment, I will close public comments and open it up for City Commission comments. Commissioner Esterbrook? None? Okay. Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Any Commissioner comments?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I just wanted to say that the city is in the process of upgrading the technology in the City Commission. So those of you who are watching from home on either YouTube or the city's channel are experiencing different volumes, you're messing with your sound, and so they're in the process of fixing that and should be fixed in another week, by another week at least. But I want you to know that I really appreciate the opportunity to join the City Commission meeting electronically. That's what I need to be doing right now. So I appreciate that the technology is in place and it isn't earth-shaking to have a commissioner join a meeting from home, like it used to be, on the phone only. I wanted to mention that there are several new law board appointments. Of course, the city has appointed three, Pat Hudgen, B. Stony, and myself, and those are effective January 1st. And the county commission has appointed Commissioner John Ford, new Commissioner Catherine Fokie, and Bob Ward, who is a reappointment. And I'm not sure, I guess they loaded on that just yesterday, I guess. So I assume it's effective immediately. I'm not sure when it's effective. The Manhattan City Commission met with the local legislative delegation last Friday, electronically for the most part, to talk about the top priorities that the city has. And I believe that the legislative delegation is meeting with all of the local jurisdictions. They've met with the county, I read in the paper, so it's just what we do right now. We have a new year, a new legislative session, and aren't we glad it's 2021? We get a do-over. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. And I think we met with them yesterday. It might seem like a long ago, but I believe it was just yesterday morning. I do have a few Commissioner comments as well. Riley County Health Department is still doing pre-COVID testing. Saliva-based COVID testing is taking place at Seaco Park in the Riley County Fairgrounds area, from 5:30 every day except Sunday and on holidays through the month of January. And that's not just for Riley County residents, so wherever you are, if you happen to be in that area, it's highly advised to get tested, just so we, just so you know, if you are positive and need to take any precautions. And just to get an idea of community spread, that's one of the testing strategies that the state has implemented. I hope everybody had a wonderful first day back at school. USD 383 went to five days a week, although this will be four-day week, but going to every day. And this will be a challenge for our teachers and our students, but also it falls on all of us to make sure they can continue having five-day-week schools. So we need to also take some of that responsibility and take care of our city, our public education staff and students and families. That's the only way we're going to get back to any type of normalcy in our community. This is also, January is also the month of slavery and human trafficking awareness month. It is still very much happening within our state and within our region and within the United States. Commissioner Morris and I went to a convention conference a few years ago, and we realized there wasn't any kind of human trafficking process or place, taking place as far as trying to prevent it. And it was happening in massage therapy parlors and such. We were able to get an ordinance in place because of that. And it is happening, like I said, within our community, and we're just blind to it. And more so now that everybody wears masks and And more so now that everybody wears masks and students may not be in school as much. So just to look at, be aware of signs that might not look quite right to you and report it if you see something happening. With that, again, thank you for the Martin Luther King Committee for being here this evening. We do appreciate all that you do. We are going to move on to old business consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are those of routine and housekeeping nature or those items which have previously been reviewed by the city commission. A commissioner may request the item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the commission have any questions or comments of the consent agenda items? And if you are participating remotely or here, please state your name before or when making comments. Seeing no comments. The public has, the public was also allowed to submit public comments related to an item on the consent agenda through the city's website or by emailing or calling us. No public comments regarding any of the consent agenda items were received. And is there anybody in the public that would like to make a public comment regarding the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to ask for a motion from the commission.
Mayor, I move that we, this is Commissioner Esterbrook, I move that we approve the old business consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Linda Morris, I second the motion.
Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes, except no on item C.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes, except for no on item C.
Commissioner Esterbrook?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero with the exception of item C, which carries three to two.
Okay. At this part, do I continue, Ron, or? Okay. At this part of the meeting, this is when we have our reorganization. And I'm going to make a few comments and then we'll move on with the reorganization for the city commission with different titles and going back to being city commissioner again. So a few comments during my year as mayor. I was honored to serve as your mayor for the past year. No one anticipated a pandemic to change our lives in such a dramatic way. I'm very proud of our city staff. They are the backbone of our city and made accommodations as necessary. The biggest accomplishment is continuing city operations without missing a beat, transitioning as necessary and functioning in a professional manner during these difficult times. They took care of each other and the community. Information regarding COVID-19 was very fluid. We had to modify our routines, gatherings, and meetings based on weekly data. This impacted every governing agency, staff member, business, public education, and family. We had to make tough decisions regarding our budget and even tougher decisions regarding public health. I am proud of our community. These are challenging times and the Manhattan family stayed strong and continued to work together. The Manhattan Recovery Task Force was a great place for community leaders to hear the latest updates from each other and communicate their concerns. They discussed solutions and built a trusting relationship with each other. Everyone worked hard to keep our community safe and open and shared this common goal. Even though we're in the middle of a pandemic, we accomplished several projects. The Douglas Center is near completion. The two community rec centers are moving along. The Aggieville Garage finally had a groundbreaking ceremony and is set for construction. The collaboration and partnership with other entities is always essential for a strong community. We value the relationships we have with Kansas State University, USD 383, Fort Riley, our businesses, and our nonprofits. Communication between all these agencies is extremely important, especially during this process. There's still time. We need to be, we need to take pause, evaluate the situation if there are increases in our positive COVID cases, hospitalizations, and deaths. Vaccines are here, but it's going to take some time before everyone gets vaccinated, probably spring or summer. At the core of it all, people connected and continue to strive to overcome the barriers and to love each other in our community. I'm optimistic and hopeful for the future. Open five days a week throughout the rest of this year. I'm grateful to have a chance to serve as your mayor. My service to my community as your city commissioner. Thank you. Brenda's next.
I would like to ask the commission for nominations for mayor.
I can't hear. I think I'm supposed to say, I'll say this because I think it's the right time. I move that Commissioner Butler be appointed to serve as mayor until the first working Tuesday of January 2022.
A second?
Commissioner Hattasol, second.
Hearing no other nominations, all in favor of Commissioner Butler for the position of mayor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Okay, I'd like to ask the commission for nominations for mayor pro temp.
Commissioner Hattasol here. I move that Commissioner Linda Morris be appointed to serve as mayor pro temp until the first working Tuesday of January 2022.
Second.
Hit that button again. Hearing no other nominations, all in favor of Commissioner Morris for the position of mayor pro temp, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, at this point, Ron, I'll let you take it from here.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Normally, we would have this shift that occurs when folks shift around and move to their new slots. And obviously, in the pandemic, that but we also usually ask the mayor to join us down at the podium, the outgoing mayor, so we could recognize the mayor for their service. So we have a ceremonial plaque for Mayor Reddy thanking her for her dedicated service for the city of Manhattan, January 2020 to January 2021. And I will provide that to her. And then the other kind of tradition we've been doing over time is taking some pictures and highlighting some key aspects. So we grabbed her at the recent groundbreaking down at the Aggieville Parking Structure. A nice photo of her here at City Hall and then one of the beam signing. I think that one might be down at the Douglas Center. So we have those for you, mayor. And we know it's been an extraordinary year and that's obviously has been a big challenge and we appreciate your leadership on behalf of the commission and the city staff, the city of Manhattan. We appreciate and thank you for your service and your family members that have supported you along that way. I'm sure that's been a long road for them as well at home and so we appreciate their support for you as well.
Thank you, Ron, and thank you, city commissioner. I'm surprised there were a few pictures.
Okay, thanks, Ron. I guess at this point, I'm supposed to make a few comments, but I'll keep it pretty brief. I'm, of course, optimistic on what comes for the next year. I think everything's going to be looking up pretty much. It's an honor to be called the mayor again. This will be the second time around on that. And of course, it is a ceremonial position. It comes with a little bit of, you know, signing things at the end of meetings, so it takes a bit longer. And some additional, you know, committee assignments and things of that nature. But primarily, you know, what happens at the commission is still a commission decision, not the mayor's decision. And the only thing maybe that the mayor gets that is not clear in our various documents is what Teddy Roosevelt called the bully pulpit. Because the media tends to always ask the mayor questions instead of individual commissioners. So you have that ability to maybe be hurt. But what I'd like to focus on, you know, for the next year is using that bully pulpit as a method of convincing the commission to focus on what I call city priorities. And for me, they haven't changed in 10 years. You know, the first one's taxes. I don't want to see property taxes go up. I don't want to see sales taxes go up either. We just passed a sales tax thing. So that's got to be one of our things, integrated in the strategic plan. We got to continue with infrastructure and the three big ones that have been discussed. Of course, the airport, we got a runway issue. We got a maintenance shop we need to finish. We got a levy we need to fix. And we need to do that, you know, staying within our budget. And then the last is responsible growth. I mean, the city's growing. We got things like the North Campus Quarter, the Aggieville Projects. And we need to continue to make those happen, but again, with the caveat that don't increase that city. So to me, that's the focus that I'd like to see the commission go on the strategic plan is right around those three things. And that'll help us move into the next year, especially small business, by keeping that tax base low. So appreciate the honor of doing this. It'll be fun this time. So at this point, let's take a little short 10-minute recess and then we'll reconvene. Thank you.
Okay, we'll re-adjourn and move into the new business consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which previously have been reviewed by the city commission. The commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the consent agenda. Now, on the consent agenda, we have a need for at least a commissioner to be on one of the items, which is item E, which is engineer on-call services. And at our coordination meeting, the commission agreed to have Commissioner Morris and Commissioner Butler serve on that particular selection committee. Does the commission have any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items? And do we still have, yep, there's Linda up in the corner. Can you hear us, Linda? You're good?
I can hear you now, yes.
Okay, excellent. Okay, the public was allowed to submit public comments related to an item on the consent agenda through the city's website, or by emailing or calling the city commissioners direct until 4:00 PM today. No public comment regarding any of the items was received. Those wanting to make comments can do so at this time. Those on the speaker's lift, if any, will go first, and then any other members of the public may stand and be recognized to come forward. Each speaker has five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, and for those listening or watching this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that has public comments on the consent agenda items? Okay, seeing no public comments, we'll close the public comment period, and then I'll ask the commission if we have a motion to approve the new business consent agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the new business consent agenda.
Okay, can we call the roll?
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yeah.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Rennie?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
... which tonight only has one item on it, and that's to consider request to rename Seventeenth Street to Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. And we have a couple of presenters. I guess Kevin Bryant, co-chair, is going to present that, so if you'll take it from there, you have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Bryant. I'm the co-chair of the Manhattan Martin Luther King Memorial Committee. I'm here representing the committee, and this request for Seventeenth... I'm going to give you a little history behind this. And I'm gonna, I'll...
Oh, wait, I should screen here a second. Let me, uh, let's try that again.
Fifty-three years ago, Reverend Martin Luther King spoke to seven thousand plus at Ahearn Fieldhouse here in Manhattan, addressed the state of racial inequality in our nation. The progress that has been made since this time, and the progress is still needed. Dr. King reinforced the importance of pushing for change through nonviolent protest and actions. He reasoned that nonviolence was the most potent weapon of people to struggle for freedom and human dignity. This speech was the last of its kind that Dr. King would deliver before he was assassinated seventy-seven days later. We know that Dr. King has visited Bethel College and Kansas State University. His last stop at Kansas State University was the last university speak that he had. Today, the Manhattan Martin Luther King Committee requests that the City of Manhattan officially rename Seventeenth Street Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. The committee canvassed Seventeenth Street residents, explained the purpose of the change, and received universal support to proceed. The history of the MLK Committee and its city, and the city efforts in two thousand five and two thousand six led to the designation of Seventeenth Street as a memorial drive is important. While a step was made forward, the memorial drive designation stopped short of the official renaming of Seventeenth Street. I have to put a little personal, it's not really personal, no. We look for motivation. What our committee is behind is motivation and education of Martin Luther King's words, his actions, and his beliefs. Before the two thousand seven ceremony on January nineteenth, a Manhattan high school student named Whitney Finn produced a mural. If you take a look at this photograph, it was a fifteen-by, excuse me, sixteen-by-five, four-panel mural that was done with the help of other artists at Manhattan High School and other members of the Manhattan Arts Center, and also from donations from the Home Depot. I want to say it again, there are four panels that were sixteen by five feet. Whitney was a high school student. We inspired people before we even put the designation on the street. That mural has lasted eleven years and has followed the Manhattan Martin Luther King Committee to every one of its community celebrations. In two thousand eighteen, we received a grant from College Avenue Methodist Church to convert the mural to a canvas base, to make it easier to move around. And again, just four panels, sixteen by five, of plywood. The thing was unbelievably large and beautiful. Again, the motivation that she had to complete this task is almost Hercules. Having known that, because I've taken that mural around to at least seven celebrations. Two thousand eighteen, when we changed the grant, I made contact with Whitney, and she is a graphic designer in Seattle, Washington. Whitney distinctly remembered the event, and she remembered what it went through, what she went through to produce that mural. The amazing part of that mural is also that it depicts King's March in Washington. But underneath there, which we usually associate with King's March in Washington, is the "I Have a Dream" speech. Whitney did not pick the "I Have a Dream" portion for the words that went on this. Instead, she picked darkness cannot drive out darkness; hate can not drive out hate; only love can do that. This was even before we designated Seventeenth Street as Memorial Drive. I'll go back at the end of this, and you can see what the mission is of our committee. What we are trying to do is enhance the peace that Martin Luther King brought here. The much lighter mural was used in two thousand twenty community celebration, and that was funded by College Avenue Methodist Church. And that's kind of a depiction of what we had to go through to transfer this mural. The mural is very large. The first place we went to was College Avenue Methodist, and we displayed it there. After that, we displayed it at the State House during the two thousand twenty Martin Luther King Ceremony. And I just want to go back to say that Whitney Finn, a high schooler from Manhattan, Kansas, constructed a mural depicting Martin Luther King's speech in reference to his visit here at Kansas State, and his speech on the future of integration. Education is a part of the process of understanding. On August eighth of two thousand twenty, was designated "Pray on MLK Drive Day." Local churches organized a day of prayer to end racism and pursue justice. A petition for the residents' support was started on that day. We obtained seventy-eight online signatures through change.org, and several of the committee members and volunteers canvassed Seventeenth Street, which we approximated is one hundred and fourteen residents, to speak to the residents about the designation of Memorial Drive and the Seventeenth Street Drive. Seventeenth Street. Out of the eighty-eight people we did talk to, seventy-two signatures were acquired supporting the movement to change Seventeenth Street to Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. On a funny note, we have a smaller-sized mural that was on. On a funny note, I spent a lot of time canvassing down on Seventeenth Street. I had my cowboy hat on, my mask, and the interesting and warm and exciting thing about Manhattan is that many people came out and talked to me. They knew more than I thought they knew. The Smith House had twenty-one young men in there that spoke, that understood the significance of Seventeenth Street in our community. It was a very eye-opening experience for them. We have also secured support from Kansas State University with a letter from Linda Cook, Chief of Staff and Director of Community Relations, supporting this movement on December twenty-second, which is when our canvassing kind of concluded. Over one thousand streets across the world have been renamed Martin Luther King for Martin Luther King, and over half of those are communities with less than ten thousand. There are a number of reasons why renaming a street for Martin Luther King Jr. in Manhattan would be the honorable thing to do. Symbolism is just one of them. Seventeenth Street symbolism is the bridge. In the past, Yuma Street, East and West acted as a chasm to people of various backgrounds. Renaming a north and south street in honor of Dr. King would act as a bridge to the local community instead of reemphasizing historic divisions. The connection that it would bring, the connection of Seventeenth Street symbolically connects our military, our historical local businesses sector, or points, and the commitment to education at Kansas State University. The historic speech is something that Kansas State and City of Manhattan is very proud of. It not only produced, excuse me, not only it produced hope, it produced different, it produced more of an openness in Manhattan. Mert Hanks was elected two years after that. He served as mayor. Now, he's the only black mayor that Manhattan has had, but that doesn't mean that we haven't been represented. The historic speech fitting Seventeenth Street near the exact location where MLK delivered his final campus title speech, "The Futurist Future of Integration," at Ahearn. So Seventeenth Street, Crossroad, I later found out that extends all the way to Claflin on a walking trail for Kansas State University, which would make an excellent addition to them. In closing, I'd like to talk about an icon that we lost this year, Richard Pitts. History was his thing, and understanding the past makes a better way to the future. In two thousand twelve, I found his lecture about the Underground Railroad. At the end of the lecture, Mr. Pitts was asked questions about why is this so important? You know, what is this all about? And I am quoting him, "When you have great examples to go off of, that introduces great judgment, and you realize you have a responsibility to pass that on." So here I am, asking the commission for a change of Seventeenth Street so we can eliminate the confusion and just kind of signify what Manhattan has brought, what Dr. King's legacy has brought to Manhattan, Kansas. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Were there any questions from the commission? And there, Linda, do you have any?
Yes. I plan to support this proposal, and I appreciate the Martin Luther King Planning Committee. You know, I served on the Martin Luther King Planning Committee for twenty-plus years. And when this proposal came, the proposal, it seemed okay to, we talked about naming the street at the time, but were finally kind of discouraged, and they accepted, okay, it'll just be a memorial. But I do think that it's important that Manhattan, as we pursue diverse ways to engage and involve people in the community, I think it's important that we do something like this. Most communities have a Martin Luther King Drive, Street, Boulevard, something like that. I think in his name, it is aspirational, that we all try to be better people. And certainly, that was his message throughout his life, and that's what people focus on these days, to improve, actually, the Martin Luther King Planning Committee and the Juneteenth Celebration have been really the only two things in the community that have gone over a period, over a lot of years, to get people together and get them to talk to one another. More recently, programs like Suzanne Glymore and Jennifer Edwards and Juanita McGowan sponsored the Conversations on Race once or twice a year for the last couple of years. Those have been well-regarded in the community. Over a hundred people have came to the last, one hundred and twenty maybe. And so, it's important that we keep working on acceptance of one another, and certainly in these times where division is, seems to be among us, that we work on together in those kinds of projects. And certainly, Martin Luther King's life and his speeches are worthy of... As a whole, we aren't divided by church walls, we aren't divided by other kinds of things. This is just an opportunity for the entire community to come together and focus and do good work. So I plan to support this proposal, and I appreciate it. Jim Spencer spent, until the last three or four years, was the chair, so it was like twenty-five years at least. And then a number of others of us kind of came, and I haven't been as integral and a part of the effort since I joined the city commission. But there are a lot of people who have come and gone on the Martin Luther King Planning Committee that would be committed to this as well. So, thank you.
Mayor, this is...
Let me add too, that I am so pleased that Linda Cook wrote a letter of support. And it's so important to know that it's not just the City of Manhattan, but the university will commit to naming the street on the campus that goes north there from Holiday Inn to the K-State Union and on north, I heard, Claflin, will continue the name of the street. And that is just the best we could ask for, and I so appreciate their cooperation.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Estabrook. I just wanted to make a few comments, I guess, to follow up with Commissioner. Reverend Jim Spencer has been an integral part of the MLK Committee and co-chair still to this day. I gave him a call this afternoon, and we talked about a few things, and he was very excited to hear that this was something that we would be considering. But furthermore, he talked about the speech that Dr. King gave at K-State, seventy-some days before he was assassinated, and that speech being, you know, "The Future of Integration", and how we kind of conversed about how the things in that speech, and it's in... it's in, it's in written form in our packet, but the, Dr. King talks about the, even though it was given 53 or so years ago, it could have been given yesterday, and, and Jim said it could actually have been given tomorrow. It's, it's relative today, it's relevant, and talks about housing, talks about social unrest, collaboration, and nonviolence, and, and how love is an important connector in all of those things. But before we, we kind of go on from here, I, I think what I heard from Kevin is, and how the arts and writing contests, all the things that inspire young people. And maybe that is overlooked or taken for granted, but when I left to come to this meeting, my 10-year-old daughter stopped me and said, "Hey, don't forget, the time is always right to do what is right." And that's a Dr. King quote that she has by her attitude, and she kind of knew she was going to rib me on the way out, but I think it's important to have that relevant, that, that sign, that naming, so we can think about these things in our community. So I, I want to thank you and Reverend Spencer for bringing this and the canvassing you did. And of course, I would be supportive.
Thank you, Commissioner Estabrook and Commissioner Morris. I think I am also in supportive of this, but I also understand the, the background, but there's always logistic concerns which, which city staff, and how to make this happen. I think symbolically, it's the best gesture we can make, and probably we should have done it a long time ago, but anytime you make these types of changes, the public also needs to be aware of, if those residents that live around that area to register to vote again, and the process might be about 90 days to get signage changed, change the address on your postage, on your mail, and driver's license and such. And that, that will be communicated by, by city staff. I don't know how many times in the past if we've changed street signs, but I don't think this is the first time we've done it, and I'm pretty sure it's not going to be the last time we do it. For, for a variety of reasons, street signs change. But I think people like Debbie Nuss, Linda Vachler, Don Slater, there are so many community members that were involved with the MLK celebration, as well as very instrumental in the growth of our community, and making it very inclusive and bringing their voices, and this is one of those ways that, like I said, would be more of a symbolic gesture, so that it's constantly in front of us when we say Martin Luther King Jr. Street, or Parkway, or Drive, or whatever it might be designated as. So I think it's a good move for us to make, and hopefully, we get all the logistics taken care of as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Haddasall here. I appreciate you guys doing the, going door-to-door and trying to get people's, and you can't ever get everybody, because you can't possibly catch everybody at home, and I think you said you got 72 out of the 88 or so, which means there's 72 out of 117, or whatever, would be affected, signed up for it, which is not quite two-thirds. So there is some potential of, of people not wanting this to happen. And so, I was on the commission back in 2006 when we decided to do what we did, which we thought was a, was a good compromise at the time. We'd get the name up, we'd get the, the signs, and, and so I was, I was supportive of that. I'd be supportive of keeping it that way. I, I'm, I'm not sure how much symbolism is needed, and I'm not, I don't really vigorously oppose it. I just want to make sure that a lot of the people that signed some of the signatures were on the cross streets, or their house faced one of the other streets, they, they don't have the address change hassle that, that people have. So, I'm, I don't know, I'd probably let you, let's go ahead and move it forward, knowing now, and maybe trying to communicate with the people that actually have Seventeenth Street addresses, and make sure they know the things that are going to be renamed, so that they can say, okay, yeah, that's what I signed up for, or, oh, I didn't realize it was going to be such a hassle, if they decided it's not quite as important as they thought there. But I'd like to see us maybe consider, I know the Rotary Club, we belong to, fly place behind the Holiday Inn. I wonder if the committee might consider sometime talking to them about that, and maybe trying to make, turn that thing into a little MLK Junior mini park, get a statue or some bricks and some plaques or something, and make something a little bit more tangible place that, yeah, instead of the road signs. I would rather see us focus our energy, time, and think on something like that, that people could go to, experience a little bit more, that would be more meaningful to me. But let the full, the rest of the people that we weren't able to talk to, make sure they know what, what would be expected of them with, with the street change. But like I said before, I, I voted to get it to this point, and so, I like what we've got, and I might be convinced to change it, but I'd like to make sure everybody knows about it too.
I just have one question. Our, our motion here says, you know, have the city administration notify and schedule consideration. So what does that entail? Are we going to contact everybody on Seventeenth Street? Because that dovetails into what Commissioner Haddasall...
The process would typically be the officially change the name of the street via an ordinance. So we'll have to draft that ordinance, and then we would invite those impacted by the name change to notice of the meeting where we would schedule that, that ordinance consideration. That's the...
Okay, there is no formal process of notifying each of them?
There's not. I mean, we, it's a courtesy that we would do, I think that's something that you've indicated is important, and, and so, we would do our best to provide that notice of the, whenever the consideration of the ordinance would be scheduled.
Okay, because I appreciate the, you know, the canvassing that was done, you know, that's pretty substantial, if you, if you actually got a hold of 88 out of whatever it was, 114. But my only concern with this was, there is a little bit of a logistical burden on whoever lives there when it comes to changing an address, and, and I want to be sure that, that the vast majority agree, and that would be my only concern, if we had a large amount of residents there or property owners that do not wish to go through the logistics of changing that, then I would tend not to support it, but otherwise, I don't have a problem, and you've alleviated some of those fears, because I'm sure those 88 probably aren't going to change their mind between now and when that happens, and that may help the city staff. But, so I sort of agree with Mark, if we can, you know, if we can cross that one last little hurdle, then I think we're good to go, and then maybe we could also consider putting some better-looking signs up there, because I think those could be improved with the technology we have today, and, and those would look a little bit better. So, there's no other comments. The public was allowed to submit public comments related to the city's website by emailing or calling the city commissioners direct until 4:00 PM today. There was no public comment received, and we can take in-person comments to the audience that wishes to speak on this topic. Okay, seeing no public comments, we'll close the public comment period. And if there's no other commissioner comments, we can take a possible motion.
Mayor, I move that we authorize city administration to notify and schedule consideration of an ordinance changing Seventeenth Street to Martin Luther King Jr. Drive.
Second?
Linda Morris, I, it is a pleasure to second the motion.
Okay, so we have two seconds for the motion. We go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddasall?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Mayor Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, that, thank you for everyone that's tuning in, even if you did have maybe some problems with video and audio. We'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.